Welcome everyone to the CEC 15 special session meeting. It is Wednesday, September 8th. And we have come together tonight to discuss a draft resolution on remote learning in the school year 2021-22. I will hand the floor over to Antonia for the roll call.
Okay, just to note, we've called this meeting to order at 6:38. And there are no interpreters on this call, unfortunately, we apologize for that. I'm gonna call the roll. Camille Casaretti.
Present.
Antonia Farrar, yes, I'm here. Tia Schelskeid.
Here.
Claudia Lechuga, is Claudia here? I don't think she is. Vincent Lu.
Present.
Okay, Ina Blishteen. Is Ina Blishteen here? I guess she's not. Nana Hokel.
Yeah, present.
Okay, Alfred.
Present.
Joseph. Joseph Alexander here. I guess he is not. And Ivan Banda, is Ivan Banda here? Does anybody see any of those names on the side? All right, I guess Ivan Banda is not here, maybe some people will come later, I don't know. So, we do have quorum to proceed. And I will read the introduction, thank you so much for coming to the District 15 Community Education Council Meeting tonight, we appreciate your time. And are glad that you could join us, for those of you who are new to CEC meetings. There are 32 CECs throughout the city, plus four citywide councils. Each CEC represents a community school district and each is made up of 11 volunteer members, nine of whom are elected by parents in the district and the remaining members are appointed by the Brooklyn Borough President. CEC 15 is a state mandated public body responsible for ensuring that public school parents and the public have input in educational decisions that are made at the school district level. Our council reviews education policies and advocates for high quality education that benefit all of our District 15 public elementary and middle school students. CEC 15 serves 35 elementary and middle schools and one high school. CEC members serve in an advisory role on education matters to the district superintendent, the chancellor of the Department of Education and elected officials. We approve district school zoning lines submitted by the Department of Education, we evaluate our district superintendent, we review the district's educational programs, and we support school leadership teams. We also submit recommendations for the School Construction Authority's annual capital plan. We actively seek input and feedback from the public and encourage you to visit our website, cecd15.org. Take a look at our Facebook page and write to us about any issues you may want to address or learn about. All of our names and contact info are available on our website. And I will just kindly remind everyone to please sign in, there is a link in the chat. We, we need our parliamentarian to read the public comment protocol, but I do not know if he is here yet, is Joe here? It does not appear like Joe is here. Would anybody else be able to read the parliamentarian protocol, the public comment protocol, sorry? Okay, I guess I'll read it then. Effective Friday, September 2nd, 2001, Governor Kathy Hochul signed legislation extending virtual access to public meetings under New York State's Open Meetings Law, which allows New Yorkers to virtually participate in local government meetings during the COVID-19 pandemic. The legislation, which was initially implemented by executive order during last year's state of emergency, allowed state and local government meetings that are normally held in person to be held remotely instead, as long as the public has the ability to view or listen to the meeting and as long as the meeting is recorded and later transcribed. Tonight's meeting is taking place remotely and will include a public comment period so that we may allow for additional feedback from our families and school community members. You may leave your camera on. Or for your own privacy, if you prefer, you may use audio only during the comment period and throughout the meeting. When you comment, please respect the privacy of others, please do not include names of children or staff. Guests who make inappropriate comments will be removed from the meeting. During the public comment period, you may add comments to the chat or raise your hand to speak. And you will have two minutes to comment, we try to hear from as many members of the public as time permits. You can also comment by email and I will put our email address in the chat. It is cec15@schools.nyc.gov. And now I will turn it over to Camille.
Thank you, Antonia. Hi, everyone, I'm Camille Casaretti. I want to wish you a very happy Rosh Hashanah, if you are celebrating tonight. We have come together this evening with the special session because we wanted to meet before the school year began. And unfortunately, this was the only date that we could have. So, we, at our August meeting, we had discussed a previous draft of this resolution and a lot of our members had various comments on it, we didn't feel comfortable voting at that time. We have amended the document and shared it again with our members. There are still some comments to be made. We received just under 10 comments from the public. Like, we get email, most of them were in favor of the resolution. And all of them have been shared with our members. So, if you wrote your number, and thank you so much for writing, and thank you to everybody who's on the call tonight. I am just going to jump right into the resolution. And it's short, I will read it aloud. And then we will take comments from anybody who is on the call right now. If you'd like to make, if you know you want to make a comment, just please drop your name in the chat sooner than later. And if you want to speak, you may. If you prefer to just write your comment in the chat, feel free to do that as well. So, here goes. Resolution on Remote Learning in School Year 2021-22. Whereas children under 12 years of age are not eligible to be vaccinated, many of whom have older siblings. Whereas the rate of vaccination among 12 to 17-year-olds is lower than the vaccination rate of those 18 and older. And where 56% of New York City children aged 12 to 17 have received at least one dose of the COVID-19 vaccine. Whereas more contagious variant of SARS-CoV-2, which makes children more susceptible to infection and transmission, is now the dominant variant in New York City. Whereas while immunocompromised students may be eligible for medical accommodations through home and hospital instruction, we have unanswered questions about whether students with immunocompromised family members are eligible for the same remote learning medical accommodations. Whereas many New York City school buildings are overcrowded and may not have the space to provide consistent social distancing, which poses a particular risk at lunch when students will not be masked, especially in light of more transmissible variants. Whereas the city has reduced the amount of COVID-19 PCR testing to 10% of opt-in students. And whereas the DOE has not yet committed to providing more substantial masks such as K-95 masks necessary to protect against the more contagious Delta variant. Therefore, be it resolved that the Department of Education include remote learning in school year 2021-22. Is she Sherry, like to make a comment, Sherry, feel free to unmute. Use your video if you want or don't, whatever you feel comfortable with.
Hi, thank you, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I'm just there, yeah, okay, sorry, I forgot I had my camera on. So, I just wanted to say, first of all, you know, thank you for producing this resolution. We strongly support this resolution, we think it's incredibly important. I wanted to say that I found out about this meeting yesterday by, by almost accidentally. Our middle school did not let us know about this, this meeting taking place. And I didn't know that you, we did not know, even though we've tried to be active on this topic, that there was this, that, that this discussion has been ongoing for a while. So, just wanted to make you aware, if you haven't gotten more comments, it may be because of lack of awareness. And I wonder, you know, what, what else we can do about that, because I think this is incredibly important. But I just wanted to share that I think the resolution is incredibly important. I think just today, news came out that there are now 250,000 new children diagnosed with COVID in the last week. There are thousands of kids hospitalized around the country. And children in this age group in the city of New York now have the highest positive rate of anyone. And I think we can expect, you know, a large surge when kids go back to school. And frankly, you know, it's just a very deep concern. And I think that the DOE plans have inadequate testing and are not following all public health guidelines in terms of potting and, you know, the overcrowding situation. So, I think that it's basically a recipe for, unfortunately, tragedy. And I just think it's absolutely very, very sad and very concerning that there isn't a remote option for these kids who don't have the option to be vaccinated. And I'm hoping that they will have an 11th hour realization and that they will put that kind of remote option in place until kids can be vaccinated. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherry, thank you for your comment. Did anybody else like to make a comment, asks on the call? You do, you may raise your hand or feel free to write your comment in the chat. I just want to acknowledge that under the governor's new law or teleconference, the chat is now part of the public record, so please be aware of that. I don't see any other hands up for comments. I will move to our members for comments. If somebody, a member of the public has a, has a comment, please then just drop it in the chat. Antonia, would you like to make your comments?
Sure, so, I'm I'm not sure what this resolution resolves. It states that it's resolving to include a remote learning option this school year. That is a fact, remote, sorry, remote accommodations are available for students who are immunocompromised and there is a list of conditions that is continually being re-analyzed and is growing. So, I would vote yes on a resolution on a remote accommodation. I would vote yes on more testing. I would vote yes on providing K-95 masks and doing other things to improve in-person learning. However, I would not vote yes on a resolution that supports an unlimited remote learning option. And I'm going to tell you why. One, I think that's a policy that will lead to child endangerment, neglect and abuse. In-person learning is the only window into many children's lives and remote learning shuts that window. Two, it's a policy that will lead to a two-tiered system of education with an invisible, underserved, remote group of learners. Three, there is consensus amongst healthcare leaders that children need to be in school in person for health reasons. We have learned that the controlled environment in schools with the layered approach that our city has taken is actually safer than many of our neighborhoods and our apartments. We are enforcing masking, all of our adult staff are vaccinated, we do have testing, we do have ventilation. These are things that don't exist in our homes and communities and apartment buildings in, in very many cases. Last year, we consistently saw that our schools were not having the spread that our communities were having. And with the Delta virus, the same pattern emerged during the summer rising program. Citywide, we only had two closures all summer and we had hundreds of thousands of students in the summer rising program. Five, remote learning is not a long-term solution that provides a substantially equivalent education. We are seeing learning loss, particularly in math, particularly amongst Black and Brown students. Six, the CDC has just announced that we have to learn to live with COVID. COVID will continue to create variants, it will continue to mutate, and we have to learn to live with it. There is, the window has closed on completely eradicating this horrible plague. So, we have to learn to educate our students with COVID, I'm afraid. I know this view is probably not going to be very popular. But I feel like I have to say it and I don't know what I'm voting for, to be honest with you. And so, I, I feel like I have to abstain because I, the resolve on this resolution is, is too vague. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm just gonna go down the list of who I see on my screen here, so Alfred, would you like to make a comment?
I do, I just want to point out that I think this COVID issue is fluid in that once a vaccine becomes available for children under 12, that would change the circumstances somewhat. And then I think we should revisit the, the, the resolution again, once that becomes available to people. But right now, to me, remote learning should be an option, especially since we don't have a vaccine for students under 12. And especially for people at home that have either elderly parents living with them or they live in an apartment building with elderly people, these are people still susceptible to the disease. And I think that it should be an option. And that, that's my opinion.
Vincent, can you hear me?
Camille, did you call my name?
I did, I did. Would you like to make a comment?
Oh, absolutely, thank you. Yeah, I think your voice is a little bit cut off, maybe I missed the first.
Sorry.
I don't know, your voice was cut off, so I don't know if it was on my end or your end. So, yes, I think the resolution is in the right directions. Just want to reiterate what Alfred said. Vaccine isn't currently available for students under age of 12. So, this is a fact, right? Maybe we can revisit after the vaccine is available for age of, student age of 12. Second thing is the parent choice. I think that it's important that parent is the one that making a choice rather than being something that's been decided for them. Because it's really the balance between the health and education. Well, we all understand that impression learning is the best for academic results. We all, we all know it. But it, it will come with inherent risk. And this kind of risk preference and risk assessment, parent need to be the one decide. That's how I see it. And also that for my community, there's a lot of parents do concern. And I think that it's not appropriate to force our parent to send their kids to school. They should be, this should be done at their will. So, again, let them make the choice that, that fit their own circumstance. Because every family have, may have different circumstance. They may have, they may live it out there. Grandparents who's more susceptible to virus. Or they may have a parent who's like, they have some kind of a health issue. At this point, DOE's policy does not cover these kind of cases. And yes, I was, I fully support this resolution. In addition, I would just want to share this news. There are, there is a protest scheduled for, in fact, it's more a rally scheduled for Friday. I mean, this is, this is enough for 1 hour since 15. It's clearly organized by the community from South Brooklyn and North Queens. Because in those areas, a lot of parents are concerned. They want that choice and they want, they want that choice to be made available for them so they can make a choice for themselves, for their, for their kids. It's gonna be in front of Twick, 52 Chambers Street, this Friday noon, 12 to 1. So, if, if anyone interested to participate, feel free to drop by. I, I think that there are gonna be a lot, like hundreds of parents will be there. So, I think this is something that is really driven by community and I think, I think everyone should be aware. Thank you so much.
You, Vincent, if you're able to, could you just also drop that information in the chat so people have it? Thank you. Tia, I'll move to you next.
Thank you.
Hi, I was just answering a question in the chat about if we pass the resolution, what would be the implementation? Unfortunately, Mayor Bloomberg removed most of the powers of the school boards and we have community education councils now, which is what we're, what you're attending. And we express the, the, we speak on behalf of community members and parents. And the mayor, who has mayoral control granted to him by the state legislature, is the one who makes most of the decisions about, about public schools in our city. And if you would like to engage in challenging the idea of mayoral control, that is something that many education activists are involved in now. But to get back to the resolution, you know, we only have six members here. We need six votes to pass this resolution. So, I think we should all focus on what language could be contained in the resolution that would win our one abstaining council members' vote. And I would propose adding, instead of a remote option, saying that we resolved, we're asking the city to include, continue to expand the list of accommodations. Something to that effect, and I'm hoping that because parents would have to apply for permission to keep their child remote, the DOE would have the opportunity to, to intervene if a child would otherwise be in a dangerous situation. I would like to vote on this resolution tonight. If we can't pass a resolution that would require, would ask for a remote option from the city, we could at least, we could at least pass one that would ask the city to keep expanding their list of accommodations. And just going to also give voice to some of the people in the chat, someone said that, mentioned the, the vaccine not authorized for children five through 10. Someone is saying that, mentioning concerns about eating lunch indoors. You know, challenging the idea that transmission was low in schools. Someone's asking, what are the lists of accommodations currently? Has the city provided those? And another voice asking, oh, oh no, I think that's the same voice, asking for accommodations until.
We still have more council members, just so you know.
Yeah, 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 okay, sorry. I will, we'll get to the, the rest of the comments after the council member comments.
Thank you, Tia. Nana?
Yeah, thank you, can I get to Camille, okay? Yeah, so, great, and, and I think I, I agree with all the comments that have been made by my council members before, including Daphne Antonio. One of the things that I struggle with is that the resolution assistance is a bit more vague. We just want to make sure that we are avoiding giving parents who just want homeschooling option, paid homeschooling. You know, want to avoid giving that, you know, sending that message that, oh, you can choose to have paid homeschooling if you want to. We just want to get to a point where parents that have decided to offer the remote learning option, that's a legitimate concern, right? And that should really be focused on the children that are not eligible for vaccinated, vaccination yet. Those are people that are under 12. Children that are over 12, there is an option to get vaccinated or not. And like you said, I think one thing I'll tell you is COVID is here to stay, it's not going anywhere soon. The parents are gonna keep on mutating itself, right? Best approach to really limit that is to getting vaccinated. So, in one instance, want to be fair to the children that are under 12, who don't have availability, who don't have, who are not eligible yet. And at the same point in time, I think the DOE has not done anything to make those parents also feel comfortable about the city and welfare of those children under 12, right? I've done some comparisons, right? And people are comparing this to last time that was a severe pandemic. However, remember that it was a reduced capacity last season, so, with last year, school year. So, we can't really compare those, we compare apples to oranges when we compare that. Because now we're coming where children are going to be close proximity to each other. This resolution assistance now, I don't think that is good enough for me to vote yes. I think like Tia mentioned, I think we need to give, you know, parents need to apply in and we need to also focus on the children that are under 12. That for me is going to really limit it to people that really need it. That people that really want the option just because they feel like it's the one, homeschool their kids, it's like that. Because remember that this is still a public school setting, right? Children thrive the most in, in personal learning. However, their welfare and their health trumps over everything. So, we just want to make sure that we just tighten the screws a little bit on this resolution for it actually makes sense to all our council members to vote in favor of it. That's, that's what my point that I have right now.
Thank you so much. So, we have two options right now. Well, first of all, I want to acknowledge the comments that are being made in the chat. And we have passed the, the section of our meeting for public feedback. But if it's okay with our members, we could take a few more comments from appendees. Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah, I think, after, I think it's important we do that, Camille. If we can open it for members to try maybe based on our comments, that would be great.
Okay, because we still, we're, we're a little bit ahead of schedule. Times are ahead of schedule, right? So, we have some time. Yeah, you were monitoring the chat and I know at least one person asked if they could make a comment.
Yes, Melissa Vella.
Yes, Melissa. Yes, Melissa.
Melissa, I hope, pass her hand. Hi, Melissa.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, uh, for the time. I CBO, um, I work in a whole school, and, um, it's, it's middle school, of course. And it's actually really scary to hear everything that is going on. I'm normally on the calls, I try my best to be just so that I can be informed, just like everybody else. Um, so I appreciate you guys having these calls, first and foremost. Um, but I, I have a lot of concerns, and the only reason I say this is because before I moved to middle school, I was in District thirteen. And when I was there, it was, you know, the school year, um, of, of last year, twenty twenty, September and October, I was in an elementary school, and it was literally like kiddie prison. And, you know, all the kids had their masks, and they were able to social distance. And now that I moved to middle school, actually, it's a little bit different. And the only reason I say that is because, you know, some of the schools that I've seen, so my program was remote fully, no matter if school was in session or not. And so when I saw the kids on Zoom, you know, seeing them eating in the classroom and being able to have the mask on while eating, of course, right? Um, so they had to take it off. And so, you know, that, to me, is fine, because they're sitting at their desk, and, you know, they have to eat. Um, but now, you know, there is, there is somewhat of up in the air thoughts, right, in terms of going back in person? Because I'm in a school that, I'm in a building that has four schools. And so everyone is supposed to be back in person a hundred percent, right? So that's a little scary, so I just want us to keep, you know, in mind, um, that CBOs also do have to be in the school as well. Um, of course, I'm fully vaccinated, and, you know, that's fine, but, um, we are also another world. And we have to worry about space, and we have to worry about, uh, cafeterias. Um, I, I don't know if there will be a space for me, you know, I don't know if I'll be moved around. And so everything is pretty much up in the air, but I do just want to reiterate what everyone said in terms of, um, you know, the children on the twelve, not, not being able to be, to be vaccinated, and then myself coming in as a CBO, um, you know, just making it a little bit harder for space to be provided. So just, you know, to keep that in mind. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Thank you, Melissa. Would anybody else like to make a comment?
Uh, I guess I would, um, if that's okay. Uh, my name is Anne Marie Muley, I'm, I'm the principal at Cobble Hill School of American Studies. Um, I'm not really here as a principal, I think I, I just came on really as a parent. My children are in public school in District twenty-six. Um, I, you know, I think it's, it's an individual situation at every single school. So, um, at, at my own school, you know, we have plenty of space. I've, I've been able to kind of move programming so that our class size is small this year. Um, but that creates staffing issues, but we're, we're staffing issues. Um, so, you know, every school's individual. Then he's, he was in pre-K. And at the beginning, his class had three students, and, um, now, you know, towards the end, they, they had ten students, which, you know, allows for a lot of social distancing. I'm not quite sure what it's going to look like with twenty-eight students, right? And then my, my middle schooler, um, he's going into eighth grade, his school has thirteen hundred kids. Uh, the hallways are packed, the classes will be at thirty-four or thirty-three as usual. And, you know, it's very hard for children to socially distance, it just is, it is what it is. Um, I'm also worried about Delta, right? I don't, you know, I'd rather not stop as a principal or as a mom, um, October fifteenth, and say, hey, we're going remote. Um, then, I think it was, it probably would have been better if it had been something planned in June, right? In May or June, where it's like, hey, let's, let's work through the issues, but that's not where it's at. Um, so, yeah, I think, you know, there's logistical issues that are, are difficult with remote learning, right? So I think it would be hard to go to remote learning right now, tomorrow. Um, I think what schools could possibly consider is hybrid learning, right? Where you, kind of where we went back to, to the fall, um, where kids who, you know, might want to stay home have the ability to do that, or maybe they just don't do remote, maybe they just do two or three days a week. So there is no remote, everyone goes in, but partially, right? I think that might work, and I think that might work even in the future. I don't know if my kids have to be in school five days a week and get tired, and then have homework after school. I mean, yes, last year was nice, there were a lot of benefits, uh, to being at home. So things to think about, I'm glad you guys have a voice, um, sometimes a voice that, that school leaders are missing. Um, from the D O E, we really don't have much of a voice. Um, so, so I'm glad that you're here and, and to work through some of these issues. But, yeah, I think at this point, with all the variables in the air, um, I think, you know, smaller class size is a must. I think the fact that schools are opening with thirty, this is again, more of a parent opinion, not a D O E opinion. I'm, I'm speaking as a parent. I think it's, I think it's difficult, I can understand the concerns out there, I have, I share the same concerns.
Thank you so much for your comments and for the insight, it's, it's great to have your voice, and thank you for coming tonight. Um, anybody else's comments? Um, I, I'd like to discuss the suggestion that TMA to modify the last line of the resolve. And, um, for, for any of our members who have that file open, um, they, they dropped it in there, but I don't know if the public can actually view that edit, so I'll just, just read it aloud, what I have in there, and, and let me know if you think it makes sense or not. Um, therefore, be it resolved that the Department of Education clarify and expand their list of accommodations and include remote learning in school year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, until vaccine is approved for children ages four to eleven. I wrote four, even though you had written three in the chat, five in the chat, because, um, a lot of pre-payers, four years old, so.
Hey, Camille, maybe, um, move the, um, the until vaccinate, include, uh, remote learning until the vaccine is approved before expand the list of accommodations, because it sounds like they also can finish expanding their accommodations when the vaccine is approved, do you know what I'm saying? Cause-
Okay, so just move that first part-
Yeah.
To the end.
Yeah.
Uh, so that Department of Education include remote learning in the school year until the vaccine is approved. And-
Yeah, Camille, um-
Anna, I can't hear you.
No, no, okay, I was waiting, I thought, so I think one thing that we also need to think about, and that's is, is the resources, right? Um, and I think, you know, what kind of remote learning is it gonna be? Because, uh, if you're gonna go back to the remote learning as last year, um, it has to be resources that are available for those who, of that, of, of interest, I, I think that's probably one of the challenges that you used to kind of, they face, where, um, resources for, I said this may be limited. So I think that's one of the-
I think we lost you.
Cut off.
Nana, are you there? Um, Camille, I just, I want to say that I, I'm like a little bit confused about the last sentence. Um, but I would support a, a resolve to continue to expand and reevaluate the list of accommodations, add increased testing, and provide K and ninety-five masks. Um, but the, the bit about the waiting for the vaccination of uh, twelve and under students, I'm a little, I, I'm a little fuzzy about that. I don't like that last part.
We can take it out. Let's take it out and vote. And add high quality to remote learning. Do you want me to drop the language in the chat?
I think you need to drop, I, I don't know why it doesn't go in my brain verbally.
Yeah, are, are you able to just write into the document, I'll, I could take out what I did.
Sure. I'll do it, I'll-
The reason, uh, somebody's asking a question in the chat about why, what's the whole issue with the lack of vaccination, why take that out? Um, the beginning, the vaccine for the under twelve set is, um, rumored, uh, by many, to be soon, to be in November, that is, that is what our mayor has said. These are the months that you can spend the most time outdoors, we can have lunch outdoors, we can do lots of educational activities outdoors. So I do not think that, um, we should squander that opportunity to have outdoor in-person, as much outdoor and in-person learning as we can.
Alfred, did you want to say something?
I'd like to say something. I think, I don't think the vaccine has anything to do with outs- outdoor learning, if they want to have lunch outside or anything outside, they should, um, but at certain points, there's gonna be thirty-three or twenty-eight kids in a classroom, and I think that's the issue for some people at home. And I do think there should be some language in there about until there's a vaccine that's approved for children under twelve. I think that's, I think that's important. I don't think, I don't think the, the vaccine language has anything to do with the some, the, the four months about being able to do some of the education outside, or having lunch, or even playtime outside.
Uh, under this language, by the way, uh, which I've posted in the chat, can the, therefore be it resolved that the Department of Education continue to expand the list of accommodations for remote learning in school year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, I'm sorry, for high-quality remote learning. Um, uh, i- it actually, um, does allow for the D O E to say that children under the age of twelve who are not vaccinated, uh, would be on the list of accommodations. I just want to point that out, that, that the accommodations could include anything that the D O E decides um, is, is, uh, is something that's necessary for, um, children to, to switch to remote learning.
Uh, you don't want to add the, uh, bit about the K and ninety-five masks, masks and the increased testing?
Um, sure, I mean, it's in the body of the resolution, but, um, but yeah, okay.
Do you want to put the final sentence up there, Tia?
So sorry, I thought you could hear me, uh, I'm doing it now, so, and provide high-quality masks such as K and ninety-fives. And how much testing do we want to-
Just increase, increase-
Okay, increased testing over last year. Sure. And there, there it is. So if you want, I will, I will combine all of these edits into one thing. Um, and thank you guys, um, all for your comments. Um, we, uh, we hear you, um, but we want to actually pass the resolution tonight, so, um, we are rewriting the resolution so that we will, we can pass it, and the Department of- um, sorry, wait, I just I don't know why I have this tiny little window to edit in. Uh,
Oh, you can be the high one.
Okay. And be why isn't it copying that? Okay. All right, well, I'll just retype it and provide I will be Okay, there it is.
Therefore, be it resolved that the Department of Education include high-quality remote learning in school, wait, that's not it was supposed to be-
Oh, right, and expe- I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I don't, ex, ex- Yeah, continue to expand, sorry, I couldn't copy and paste. But, uh, Camille has successfully done it in the draft, okay, so therefore, the-
I'm gonna have to go over to the draft, hold on.
Okay, I need to put the Oxford comma in. There.
Therefore, be it resolved that the, the Department of Education continue to expand the list of accommodations for high-quality remote learning in school year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, increase testing over last year, and provide high-quality masks such as K and ninety-five. I can get behind that, because it is, uh, now a resolution about a remote accommodation and improving, um, and making in-person learning safer, so you have my yes vote on that, I don't know how the rest of the council feels, I don't know if anybody wants to make a motion to vote, or if we're going to continue to deliberate.
Does anyone else have a deal breaker in here? I mean, is, is anyone else not gonna vote for this?
Uh, I'm not gonna vote for it.
And what, what would, what would win your vote?
I think, I, I, I thought this whole thing was about, um, people who have kids, um, coming home. Um, and at some point, when, um, I actually thought that, that this resolution would include something about kids being vaccinated under twelve, making it safer to go to school, and I thought, that, that's what the option is, and I'm not sure a resolution like this does anything but, um, tell the D O E to change things. Um, I don't think it's clear enough what we want in there, besides, and K ninety-five masks and more testing. Um, so I just don't think the resolution goes far enough.
So we will have no resolution?
Um, I, I just want to bring something up that I've been thinking about regarding the accommodations that are being offered, um, for, you know, I, I feel like the D O E has really an ineffective in clarifying what would qualify as an accommodation. And, um, somebody had dropped in the chat, may I see the list? And I was trying to find it again on the D O E website, and it's just impossible to find. I was looking for it the other day, and I couldn't find it, and I've only seen it once. Um, there were a lot of high-level medical conditions on there. Then, when I asked, well, what if you had blah blah, which was not on the list, uh, hold- Hold, yes, that would qualify as well. And so then you would, as a parent, you would have to actually request option and then have a letter from your doctor stating whatever condition was. And the condition includes mental health issues. But it is not clear on the DOE website that you can even do that. So I think that it's really putting a lot of people at a huge disadvantage to just not even understand the rights and what they are allowed to do in terms of just asking. Because every ask has to be reviewed. You know, I mean, if the DOE is bombarded with 300,000 asks for an accommodation, that is going to also create a big backlash of trouble. And, and like, you just don't have the clarity. So I'm really unhappy about that piece in particular. Because it makes me wonder, you know, how many people actually qualify? And if we don't know, and the principals don't know, and the teachers don't know. Now, it's just, it's too much of a mystery. It's very upsetting. And it just compounds the fear and anxiety that people already have. I mean, I don't see the harm in including the part about vaccine for children under 12. I personally don't have a child under 12, but I can only imagine the anxiety that people are experiencing thinking about her baby in a classroom with 32 other students in rooms that we know cannot be social distanced than three feet. I think that NICE ed also did a huge disservice by putting out guidelines that are so vague with a lot of, you know, and possibles. It's just a really hard situation and, and life is at stake. Now, this is literally a life or death situation. So I think that it's important for the DOE to know that they really could have done better. Mayor de Blasio could have done better communication around this. I think that all of the anxiety that parents, teachers, staff, and students are feeling could have been.
Sorry to interrupt, Camille. Can you let Ivan in?
Oh, yeah, sure.
He's in.
I just, I wish, I wish that we were having these conversations in June instead of like three days before school starts. So I don't know. I mean, if you guys want to continue working on the resolve, maybe we can come to a conclusion that, you know, everybody will be at least content with. I don't think anybody is going to get exactly what they want at this point. You know, and that's like part of our role. We just have to like do things collectively to move forward. So let's see. Maybe Ivan, maybe Ivan is the missing link here and could help with that final resolve. Sorry to put you on the spot, Ivan. But we are, we are basically at a point where we have rewritten the, therefore be it resolved line. And just trying to tighten it up. Because right now we do not have six votes, so.
We, I think we'll have six votes with Ivan since Alfred said he did not want to vote for it. I think Ivan, would you, we basically rewrote the resolution to say that we want the DOE to expand accommodations for remote learning. Because Antonia did not want to vote yes for a resolution asking for a remote option. Would you be willing to vote for this resolution so that we at least passed, passed this instead of no resolution?
Yes, I voted in favor of it.
Hold on a second.
Great.
Ivan just joined us, didn't hear any of the debate, doesn't know what the issues are, why abstain? And we're just gonna, that's the way we're gonna operate?
Um, would you like to tell Ivan?
May I make a suggestion? Hi, this is Vincent. May I make a suggestion?
Sure.
Yeah, I see the sticking point is that the, there's no objection on expanding, expanding the list of accommodation for high quality, work, work risk quality, remote learning for, for this year. I think the sticking point is that to specify what are the accommodation list. I think that to we saw Alfred's concern, we can, we can expand this result to say that expand this list accommodation for remote learning for this school year, including but not limited to, to students under age of 12 who aren't qualified for vaccine. And family, we member that has medical need. I think this is the two sticking point there because every family are different. And those family that concern the most are these two type of families. I think if we can add these two, I'm sure the Alfred would be okay with it. But I'm just not sure about Antonia, if she's okay with it.
No, I already illustrated my objection to a broad-based remote learning option. And based on the fact that it's been shown that our classrooms are safer than the home environment and a whole list of other reasons. I feel like that's sort of, I, no, I just can't vote for that one addition. I'm sorry.
I think, I think we have to understand that not every single schools are able to create outdoor space for our students. And also during rainy days and during extreme conditions, even school able to, unable to do it. At those time, our student has higher chance of, of those risks and probably to consider those.
It's not about outdoor. It's been shown that the controlled environment in the classroom with the layered approach is safer than our communities and our apartment buildings, regardless of outdoor learning, outdoor lunch. It's been shown with the Delta virus during this time of of the summer program. So it's, it's not just about the, I mean, the outdoor.
But summer program, it's a different capacity, different level of like full reopening. So like, I think like Nana has said, it's really, we compare apple to orange. So there's no exact data to support that school actually safer or is dangerous. But there are concerns there on those concerned about it. I think what I do here, what Ivan have to say there.
I think you have to read the entire resolution.
Okay, well, we're now at 7:36, so I want to be respectful of everybody's time. Do I have to reread the entire resolution?
Well, I mean, no one let, you know, we asked Ivan if he was willing to vote one way. Is he willing to vote with that last part to include the vaccinations? I mean, does he want time to listen to the whole arguments? Do we want to, do we want to take time to do this, to work on it some more?
No, we need to vote tonight. We could either vote on a resolution, on this resolution that has Ivan's vote. Or we can vote on the resolution for the remote option, which would have, which would have Alfred's vote. I'm guessing.
If I can add here, so remember that, you know, the whole black remote option is not something that I'm also in favor of. Right? So we need to be, you know, we need to be careful here because you know, I think I like where we're going with expanded options, right? And parents that really have like real concerns have that option, right? And I, that is the direction which we need to go. And, and I think that that makes sense, right? You know, that you're not going to send a kid that, you know, has, you know, is getting treatment for cancer, something like that to such an environment, right? They need to be able to have that option now too. So those are the critical case we're looking at. And I think it's important that we do think about people that are in that critical need that should be able to have that option, especially for those who are under 12 that are not, are not, are not eligible for vaccination. Right? So we just need to be very cognizant of the fact that we're talking about a very, very, very needed section of our children, right? That need that option. So I think it's important that we actually pass the resolution tonight with that. But then again, I just want to hear what, you know, Alfred has to say. But for me, yeah, blanket is not something I'm open to, but expanded options and also, you know, it's a deal breaker for me. So I like where it was going and I'm going to be in favor for, you know, of it, of it, where we had it at first. No, what we had it, you know, in terms of it's not an option. So I'll just leave it to everybody to see what everybody else has to say.
Um, yeah, so Alfred, if we added the part about the allowing it for the under 12s, would, would you be willing to vote for it?
The under 12 would, and then with vaccinations you're talking?
If we said, you know, if the accommodations included children, but not limited to children under 12 who are not eligible for vaccination?
Then yes, I would vote for it.
Okay, Camille, do you want to put that in? You're muted.
So we would say therefore be resolved that the Department of Education continue to expand the list of accommodations.
Including but not limited to children five to 11. Until, until vaccines are approved.
For half three to 11.
That age.
They are 3K students.
Oh, right, right. I don't know why someone said five. Yeah. For that age group.
Do we want to consider for family, with family member with medical need? I'm just go out there, see what you guys, what you guys think.
I think it's all included as part of the accommodation, right? So we just don't want to be specific because that is another accommodation umbrella. Right? So, you know, that's why, you know, usually accommodation is going to be based on individual need.
I mean, in theory, anything could be included in that, but yes.
Yeah. So you have.
I agree.
You want to copy and paste that in the chat, Camille?
It's a little wordy. I feel like we kind of break it up into two lines.
Also, I feel like we don't need in school year 2021, 22.
Oh, just because it's in the title?
Yeah. And it's, it's just, we put it in there for other reasons that we don't need. And I think it needs to be three to 11 because 3K.
Wait, just happened.
I just commented.
Is Ivan still on the call?
Um, he said something about being in traffic.
Yeah, he's not on the call.
I'm, I'm gonna abstain.
Well, I think we've lost Ivan, so.
He's back on again.
Oh, cool. Okay. All right. You want to copy and paste that into the chat and then I'll make a motion to vote?
I just still sounds like sort of, I hate to be so like.
Oh, is it because the increased testing?
And the grammar.
But is it because the increase, is it because the increased testing part is like a new idea? Is that what you mean?
Yeah, it feels like it should be two sentences.
Okay, well, that's why I said put a semicolon there. I think that'll really help.
You can do it. You have editing privileges.
I, I don't.
Oh, what can you do? Oh, maybe you have to refresh. So put the semicolon here. Wait, no, not here.
I think the semicolon.
No, no, I just did it.
She got it, she got it. Okay, I can live with that.
I know, that's terrible, but let's just, okay, I, I'm gonna make a motion to vote. Do I hear a second?
I'll second the motion. Okay, so then I will go down the roll call list. Antonia, how do you vote?
You're muted.
Sorry, abstain.
Tia, how do you vote?
Yes.
Claudia is not here. Vincent, how do you vote?
Yes, thank you.
Nina is not here. Nana, what do you vote? Thank you. Alfred, how do you vote?
Yes.
Joseph is not here. And Ivan, are you still with us? Oh, he wrote in the chat, I vote yes. And I also vote yes. So we have six votes of yes and one extension. So the resolution passes and we will send that off to the DOE right away. I want to thank everybody who was able to attend this evening. And thank you for, to the people who wrote in with their comments. We appreciate all of you. Very sorry, sorry about having this meeting in the evening, holiday. Wishing everybody the best. And we are going to have our business meeting next Tuesday night for anybody who's interested in attending. Thank you so much. I will ask to have a motion to adjourn at 7:47.
I still move.
Okay, great. Thank you, everybody. Have a lovely evening.
Hi, everybody. Hi, everyone.